Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna try this and call our school choice open public hearing to order. Welcome to anybody joining through Milton Access TV. So it's May 24th. We're beginning with this brief annual open public hearing. Before we get started on that, we will go ahead and pledge allegiance to the flag.
(Coughing).
Alright, so voting on school choice is an annual procedure for the Milton School Committee. Milton is not currently a school choice district, but I would like to defer to interim superintendent McKinney for a brief overview of school choice.
So the school choice policy allows students from other area schools or towns to apply for residency, apply for admission into a number of seats that the district makes available for random drawing. In the past, this is a challenging situation. We've talked about our space needs across the district. The recommendation here would be that we carefully consider making certain number of requests for available spaces, given the enrollment challenges that we have here. But the policy as outlined by JFBB shows that every school year, the administration would determine the number of spaces available for choice students, and then consideration be given from the provisions at a public meeting to review this decision. So right now, given again the space needs and our enrollment, the recommendation is to limit available admissions.
Thank you. So we will actually take our vote on this as a school committee once we've begun the regular school committee meeting. Right now, in terms of open hearing, would like to ask if anyone in the audience wishes to speak on this topic of school choice. Is now the appropriate time if members of the school committee have questions for clarification? Just to reiterate, historically Milton has not participated in the school choice program, unless the school committee votes, specifically votes no, not to participate in the program, we automatically become a choice district. And the purpose of the vote is to limit Milton school population to the students who live in the town of Milton. However, Milton residents may still choose to attend other choice districts outside of Milton if they choose to do that. And the vote does not limit or impede any other agreements that exist in collective bargaining agreements. Does anyone have any clarifying questions for Dr. McKinney? Okay, in that case, I'll declare the school choice open hearing closed and the regular meeting called to order, 7:05 PM. And the first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda for this evening, May 24th, 2023. Does anybody have any changes that you'd like to propose to the agenda? Okay. Then that brings us to Citizen Speak, and we are joined this evening by Rebecca Mitchell, Dr. Rebecca Mitchell. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for being here.
Right here, yes, thanks. And just to remind the audience, Citizen Speak, under our policy, we set aside up to 15 minutes, and citizens are welcome to share their views for up to three minutes.
I think it's on.
No, it doesn't.
No, I don't think you're on the clock.
I'll sit. Hello? It works a little too well. Hi, my name is Rebecca Mitchell, and I'm a parent of two children, one who went through all Milton Public Schools and is in college, and one is currently a junior at Milton High School. Just a little bit about my background, because it might be relevant. I taught high school math for eight years in Florida and in Boston Public Schools, and then I got my doctorate in learning and teaching at Harvard Graduate School of Education, and was a tenure-track professor at Boston College in the Lynch School of Education, helping prepare math teachers. And then I moved to Pine Manor College to be the head of the math department and to teach college-level math where I was until Pine Manor closed last year. I'm currently, again, at Boston College, working for the Pine Manor Institute for Student Success, which is a college and career. The piece I'm working on the most is the College and Career Access Program for eighth through 12 graders from under-resourced, underserved communities, and with a summer residential component and a year-long tutoring mentoring program that is free of charge to their families. Why I'm here today is that my son was lucky enough to get tapped to be in the awards ceremony this year, and, for example, the Sentry Club, which is like 100-something of the top unweighted GPAs in the school. And I was looking at the group, and I'm really happy for them and all of their accomplishments, but I noticed very few students of color in this group. And I know that Milton Public Schools is a lot more diverse than what the awards ceremony indicated, so I just wanted to say something about that. I emailed several people, and Karen Cahill got back to me really quickly, so I appreciated that, and shared with me things like, "The tracks are flexible," which is something that's important, so someone's not stuck in a low-level track always necessarily, that parents can override, which is something that has potential. I'm curious how many do that, how many feel empowered to do that. For example, I'm Latina, and in a lot of Latino cultures, we would never question a teacher's decision, and we would never even think to try to override what a teacher would say. So I'm just curious how that ends up playing out in the schools. And I'm curious if the schools, what the schools have done to look K-12 on how to increase kind of access or, you know, the ability of students of color in Milton to be represented at these awards as they are in our schools, because I know it's not a capacity thing. From years of working primarily with Black and Brown students, I know that they are brilliant and capable of being there. A lot of my work, especially at Pine Manor, was to convince them of that, because they'd been beaten down a lot by messages, implicit and explicit, from teachers and other people in their schools that said they were not. And so I just was curious what the school system was doing in a kind of K-12 scale to look at these issues. That's okay. Anyway, thank you for your time. Can I just go now?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. Is there anyone else here for Citizen Speak? Okay. Well, thank you again for coming, sharing that with us. At this time, we can move into the superintendent's report. Dr. McKinney?
First thing on the agenda is the Special Education Program Review update. I think we have a presentation to share. So I'll just go through a high-level overview of the program review report and its findings. Included in the packet were copies of the executive summary and the recommendations. Before going over the framework, it's important to recognize the genesis of this program review. This was born out of a number of concerns from educators in our special education programs, and at the time Superintendent Sheehan recommended that we have a third-party review and address the concerns. Typically, these sort of reviews are around 30 to 60 pages. The current review is over 100 pages. So the draft I've seen so far, I anticipate getting the final product within a week, and then sharing that out as well. So here are the four guiding questions for the program review, which asks how we're using the resources across the district to meet the needs of students with disabilities, what are the roles and responsibilities of our staff to meet and support the needs of our students with disabilities, how is staff allocated, determined, and recognized across the district to advance student achievement, and how we're communicating with parents, students, and staff regarding our policies, procedures, and protocols for students with IEPs. The framework or components of the analysis are the following: a review of statewide reports, a series of classroom observations at all six schools, interviews with educators at all six schools and administrators, a survey that went out to our staff and community members. I just want to recognize and thank our CPAC organization for identifying parents to be a part of this process, and then a review of literature that supports the focus of this report. So in summary, the recommendations kind of fall into three areas. The first one is improved communication around our procedures and protocols from the district to the schools to parents and staff, consistently shared with stakeholders, and it also speaks to having a committee that reviews these communication practices on a regular basis. It also recognizes or recommends having a database of all the different programs we have at the different schools, so it's available for staff and administrators. We have a number of programs across the district, a lot of different names, and it would be helpful if it was all in one place for everyone. There are a series of recommendations around professional development, and that it not be done in isolation or in silos, but it be done with general ed, special education, and the instructional assistance, that we go over the program overviews of all the different special ed programs, and that they're data-driven. And there's a focus on clarifying and having common language around inclusion, what it is, what it's not in Milton, as well as our inclusive practices, which tie nicely into elements of our strategic plan with UDL, and making our classrooms set up for student success across the district. Also, there was a recommendation around systematic approaches, improving the entrance and exit criteria and program descriptions, that they're well-articulated across the district, it's programmatic, data-driven, and it serves as a guide. And just for clarity, program descriptions usually include the population of students that are in the classroom, eligibility for those programs, what inclusion might look like, curriculum, staffing, so there's consistency across the board. Another piece was around annual training and frequent updates. Some of the feedback was that one large overview at one time during the year may not be adequate, that special education is fluid, that we have more than one time where staff can receive updates, legal overviews, and get the information they need to make key decisions. There was also a recommendation to develop a comprehensive special education strategic plan, so we're planning three years out, where we want to be in a couple of years, that aligns with our strategic plan and also outlines budgetary support. There were consistent themes of concern around programming. We have done some professional development on co-teaching, but there's a need for more. And there were concerns raised around French immersion, staffing, equity practices in terms of helping students who demonstrate challenges in that program. And then there's ongoing concern around the caseloads, not just the numbers of students that special educators provide support to, but also the severity of need. So you could have 20 students on a caseload, then another teacher could have five to 10 that feel like 30. So coming to some agreement around parity of caseloads across the board. So moving ahead to next steps, I've shared the PowerPoint you see here, the executive summary and the recommendations with the leadership team. I have a meeting this week with the Milton Special Education Parent Advisory. We met virtually today with the MEA, and they've been inquiring around the status of this report, so I'll be sharing it with them. Our new director of people personnel, Danielle Wetmore, she's aware of this, and Andy Cavanagh, our new special ed assistant director. And I'll be working with them to develop a committee to review these findings and work over the next couple of years to implement the recommendations. I've also set up arrangement for the two consultants that did this program review. We'll be working with new leadership over the next year as consultants and mentoring to make sure these sort of things continue moving forward and improve. And then working with our MEA leadership, there are a number of JLMs, Joint Labor Management meetings, again regarding caseloads and workloads, so that we can have a better handle on student need, staff caseloads, staff management, and advocating for additional personnel if necessary. So lastly, I would say that within a week, I'll be able to share the final draft with the committee, and it'll be made public. I have some key people reviewing it, including legal counsel. So with that, that is a short presentation and overview of the report. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. McKinney. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this? Dr. Marilla?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the overview of the report. Just wondered if you have given some thought as to how the committee that you're thinking of establishing to review the report and look at recommendations, how that would align or work with the strategic planning subcommittee, just to make sure that there is that alignment and integration?
Certainly, there could be participation from members of both groups, but I think the ask from the report while I read through it is that that review committee be a various stakeholders from across the district in various positions. Right now, it seems to go through team chairs or principals. I think there are many talented special educators from service providers, SLPs, OTs, school psychologists, that all could be around the table at those committee meetings to work to implement the recommendations.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So if I'm understanding correctly, you'll be sharing the full report with us, and I'm assuming that, you know, it may be appropriate to bring this back onto our agenda in the future, once we've had a chance to review the report, people may have more questions at that time. Okay, so thank you very much for giving us this update. So the Unit C?
Yep, Dr. Pavlicek.
You have ratified agreements with Unit A, the teachers, last spring. This spring, we did Unit B, the administrative members of the unit, and Unit D, the educational assistants. Unit C is a separate group of the MEA, which is simply the people who are the recess aides, not food service, just recess. It's about 18 people state, district-wide. Historically, that's been a separate unit of the MEA, and historically, their pay increments have tracked Unit A. And so what you have in front of you for a vote tonight is an MOA which does exactly that. It says, you know, this year, it's currently now has to be one year retroactive, because this was actually the first year of the contract we're finishing. This year and the next two, they'll have the same percentage increases as the Unit A teachers. This is a group that they simply have one pay rate. There is no notion of steps or lanes or anything like that. It is simply an hourly rate for the people who work in playgrounds and luxury.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Pavlicek. So I'll make a motion, and then if anyone has questions, we can open up for those. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Unit C memorandum of agreement as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Pavlicek?
Just one question. Just, so the only change really to the contract is the compensation, there's no change to policy, practice, working conditions, anything like that. Do you know about how many people are in this unit that the district employs?
Eighteen, I think. It's the four elementary schools, that's all. So.
Thank you.
I have a question. On the bottom of page one, was that supposed to read 2024, September 1, 2024?
Yeah.
You can have my copy.
Yes, the bottom should be 24. Sorry, there's a typo there. Yep.
Good catch, remember Ross Denny. Okay, any other questions? All right, this will be, will this be a roll-call vote, or just a...
Doesn't have to be.
Okay. We're still adjusting to being in person. Okay, so all in favor of the motion to approve this Unit C memorandum of agreement, all in favor? Aye. Okay, great, that's unanimous. Thank you. So district updates?
Yes, let's, I want to begin by welcoming Dr. Burrows to his first and probably of many school committee meetings, so welcome, Dr. Burrows. It's a busy time of year with art fairs, science fairs, field days, musical productions. Beginning with our youngest students, to date, we've had 238 future kindergarten students visit the schools for kindergarten screening, and we'll see another 70 next week at Tucker School. In addition, we've had 23 future preschoolers visit Cunningham School for screening, and Tucker will host the remaining preschoolers for screening on June 7th. This upcoming week is an exciting week for our seniors as they prepare for graduation on June 4th. Don't forget, the high school is presenting Mamma Mia on the 25th, 26th, and 27th. The Pierce Players are presenting Newsies on June 1, 2, and 3. Milton High graduation on June 4th at 2:00 PM, and we're coming up, believe it or not, to the last day of school on June 21st. With that, that's all the happenings.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Exciting. I think I hear Mamma Mia in the background of this meeting.
We practiced that, yes.
All right. Thanks, Dr. McKinney, and welcome, Dr. Burrows. Very glad you're here. So in beginning the chair's report, the first item is going back to school choice and that So once again, I'll make the motion. If people have questions, we can open it up for discussion at that time. But I'd like to make a motion in light of the recommendation and the overcrowding situation that we're all familiar with, make a motion that Milton not be a school choice district for the FY24 school year. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Loring. All in favor? Okay, thank you. That's unanimous. I skipped right over. Everyone was okay without asking questions. Okay, sorry. Still figuring this out. Next, next up is the discussion and possible recommendation vote for a representative to the Climate Action Planning Committee. So I see we're joined by our select board chair, Mike Zulis. So this, the item before us right now is to discuss and consider possible appointees to represent the school committee on this newly-formed Climate Action Planning Committee. Just to review, the school committee has one seat on this committee which was formed by the select board, and it could be one of us, school committee members, could be the person that we choose to have represent us. I know the next item on our, on our agenda is to rekind of look at all of our subcommittee and advisory committee assignments. The last time we discussed that at our prior meeting, I think we were all recognizing, you know, that we have a lot of committees to cover amongst the six of us. So this one's a little bit different in that we are able to appoint someone on our behalf. And hopefully, we all had a chance to review the applications. The applications were received by the select board, and one of our options would be to first of all, see if one of us would like to serve on this committee. If not, to consider the applicants on whether there's someone in this packet that we feel would be particularly well-suited to represent the school committee with expertise around climate change and hopefully, education. So I think, once again, I'm just gonna make a motion, we'll get, have it open on the floor, and then we can discuss, because we will need to talk about what we all, what we all want to do here. So I'll make a motion to, actually, never mind, I'm not gonna do that, because we have to actually determine a name. We'll just talk about it to start with. Mark, yeah, Member Loring, go ahead.
I guess as an initial question, all these individuals you submitted, submitted it to not the school committee, but the town as a whole, right?
Right, because they are, the town is convening the committee.
Yes. So do we have any knowledge of if these individuals have been picked by any of the other boards that could nominate somebody, like the select board, you know, people, planning board, ex-planning board members in here, conservation commission?
In the email I sent out with the applications, there are three names that have been selected already by the select board. And so those would be three people that we wouldn't, would not consider, and those were Tracy Dyke Redmond.
Gotcha, Johns.
Alex, Dr. Alexander Hasha, I believe, and the third one.
John Goodlesky.
Goodlesky. Yeah, so those three were already selected by the select board. And my understanding is that at this time, they're just waiting for the school committee appointee to be named, and at that point, they can move forward with the... And at that point, they can move forward with the, with the beginning of the committee. So, I mean, I think my understanding of this would be, we basically have three options. Again, well, let's just get this maybe out of the way. Do any of us, the six, any, I don't. Do any of the five of you feel you have expertise and interest to serve on this committee? Having seen the charge for the committee?
Not compared to these resumes.
Okay. So if that's, if we're not gonna kind of take that option, then our other two options would be to take one of the people from this, the remaining packet. And there's actually one that I would like to put forward, having just read the applications. We can discuss that. People may have other ideas. But beyond that, we could also, I believe, choose to appoint someone else, you know, who hasn't necessarily, as you pointed out, Member Loring, like, applied through the town. But these people have already indicated their interest, have shared their qualifications. So I guess just to get the discussion started, having read through the applications, one person that I would like to, I guess, nominate for consideration would be Lisa Troy. Because I was noticing in what she submitted, which was pretty thorough, that she has, you know, a lengthy career in education, along with, as a science educator, along with current work in renewable energy. So I would put her forward for our consideration. And if anyone has other names that you'd like to put forward, please feel free to do that.
I actually really liked her as well when I was reading through the resumes.
Great. Any other? Go ahead, Member Two.
I think she's the only one who also answered two, two questions to the application. So I really like how thorough her application is, the extensive experience that she has. So I think she would be a great representative.
Great, thanks. Any other comments?
No, I agree.
Ready to vote? Okay. So in that case, I guess I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lisa Troy as a school committee representative to the Climate Action Planning Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Vargis. Okay, all in favor? Great, thank you very much. That's unanimous. So we will, I guess I will reach out to Ms. Troy and let her know. And then also follow up with Town Administrator Nick Milano, who had been in touch with us sort of to learn where we were in this process. So thank you all for taking the time to read through those applications. And that seems like a great solution, to have someone with expertise be on that committee. And as we segue to the next agenda item, as far as all of our other subcommittees and advisory committees, we do have a lot on all of our plates. So we went through this last time. We do need to take a formal vote on these appointments. And that will allow us to kind of move forward with scheduling and holding meetings for the remainder of this year into next year. I don't think there have been any changes from the last discussion two weeks ago to this most recent version that was shared with us. I will note just a couple of things. So Member Loring, under Facilities Advisory Committee, is prepared to chair that committee. It's not noted on this version, but we'll just kind of put a little star next to your name there. And on the Facilities Advisory Committee, we talked, well, we talked a little bit about this last time, but as well as Strategic Planning Advisory Committee, I think we agreed that for right now, it would be possible to move forward with a single school committee member on each of those advisory committees. Over the summer, as we move into next year, if we end up wanting to add a second member from our school committee to join that one person, we're able to do that. We can just keep it sort of TBD there unless anyone else has had a change of heart in the past couple of weeks and wants to raise your hand now. I will just say, in thinking about Facilities Advisory Committee and Member Loring, thank you for being ready to step up and kind of hit the ground running with that work. I think we all saw through town meeting, like, how much work we have ahead in that area as we continue to devise short-term solutions to deal with overcrowding. So I think that seems like a little bit of a priority area if we end up sort of able to find one more of us to join that. I think that's something I'm willing to entertain, that we're not gonna, I'm not gonna sort of do that tonight. But I think we'll have continued discussion of getting you a colleague on that sub-advisory committee, recognizing how important that work will be this coming year. As, and then the last correction here, we have, I'm not sure why, my name is crossed out under Town Capital Improvement. I had agreed to represent us on that, so just, I'll take the, strike out away from my name there and open up to any other thoughts that any of us have on what you see here. Just a reminder, on the bargaining team, we can stay TBA on that second person there just because we don't anticipate needing to do much with that team in the short term, thankfully. So that one's fine to stay TBA. Any, any comments, questions?
I'm going to join Member Loring on the Facilities Advisory Committee.
Oh, okay, thanks, Member Vargis. That's great. Thank you.
Of course.
Anything else? Are we ready to go ahead and vote on these appointments? Okay, so with, with the changes that we've just talked through now, we can, I guess, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed twenty twenty, I guess this should say twenty twenty-three, twenty-four at the top. Milton School Committee Subcommittee and Advisory Committee appointments. Is there a second? Thanks, Dr. Miranda. Okay, all in favor? All right, great. And for anyone watching at home, I guess just thank you in advance to all of my colleagues on school committee because although these are all open meetings and they're all posted, they represent a lot of the time that we put into serving on school committee. And I'm sure it's gonna be a productive year. So thank you all very much in advance. Okay, next is just the discussion of the summer meeting schedule. So, Dr. Burrows, it's nice to have you here for this continuation of the discussion. So as the last meeting, we kind of talked through those tentative dates, being those first two weeks, two, first two Wednesdays in August that we would be able to meet.
I think one was July, the one that you said, the last?
You're right. Sorry, the last one, the last Wednesday in July and the first Wednesday in August. Yeah, sorry about that. That's what I get for just going off my, my memory, which is.
You got a lot of brains here to help, so.
Not perfect all the time. So, yeah, so the last week, Wednesday of July, the first Wednesday of August, we talked about that being a great opportunity to kind of launch our work with you as our new superintendent. And as far as discussion, the only, I think the only, like, update that I had, I might like share based on my latest discussion with you, was the idea of having potentially, like, the two meetings. I know we talked about one being a kind of four-thirty to eight-thirty or so, including dinner, working dinner, and that the following week might be a shorter meeting that would stay focused on facilitation by MASC. You know, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but I remember that you had maybe another thought about sort of continuing in the work, like, as a team.
Yeah.
And inviting her to come at a later date.
Yeah, I know that she's on vacation, that, that one MASC trainer that we talked to is on vacation both of those days.
I see, okay.
So, you know, one thing we talked about was potentially having a conversation together going off of the text that you ordered.
Yeah.
The Governance Core, which is a really, really great kind of primer on, on school leadership. And I thought it would be a helpful place for us if we didn't have a facilitator, which, you know, frankly, a facilitator is helpful, but I think we could also have a really rich conversation just kind of go moving off of that text. So in terms of the order, I think it would probably be helpful to have that be the first conversation before going into the, the work ahead that the school committee will do in terms of setting goals and looking ahead to the, to the year. So like, looking at those two days at least that we've already established. I mean, my own bias is I think the more that we can invest together in kind of getting on the same page and getting clear, that is gonna bear so much fruit over the course of the year. So trying to like fit it in an hour or two here and kind of rush in or rush out. If we can be really thoughtful and intentional at that time, I think it's gonna really be powerful in us starting this journey together. And I'm really excited for that work.
And I think given that we now have a multi-year strategic plan, we shouldn't have a lot of variability from year to year because we now have our guiding documents. So I don't think the level of intensity at which we needed to plan last year is necessarily appropriate because we have a strategic plan with goals and timelines and benchmarks.
That's a great point. So, yeah, so Dr. Burrows had shared the suggestion of this book, The Governance Core by Davis Campbell and Michael Fulon. I, I just received it. I haven't gotten to read it yet. I just kind of flipped through it. I, I mean, I'm familiar with these scholars and know that they're really well-respected leading scholars in thinking about this topic of school governance. So I think a step would be to just order copies of this for each of us, get them to everybody as far ahead as possible so that people have as much time as possible to, to read it. I don't know if we could, maybe, Dr. Burrows, like, you and I could maybe figure out if there are certain sections that are like priorities that we want to make sure that everybody can, you know, definitely read. But we can follow up on that. And, yeah, if people are open to that, I think, I agree, it would be a really nice, like, anchor to begin our work together. And thanks for making that suggestion. And we can always, you know, I know that Dorothy Presser from MASC, you know, has indicated her availability, like, as the year goes on. So, for example, one of the topics that we may not really get to in the summer necessarily, but which is on our plate for the coming year, of course, is to conduct the superintendent's evaluation. That process, I know MASC has a lot of resources to support us with that. Given the way the last couple of years have played out, we haven't actually conducted evaluations in the sort of traditional way, just because of all of our turnover with transitions. So I think that would be one example of like a brief session that we could invite her to come, you know, and maybe as part of one of our school committee meetings and share some information with us. So one thing we might be able to do, I guess, would be understand from her, like, what the different topics are. I know last year she talked to us about goal setting, but you're completely right. Like, we've made a ton of progress on that just through the adoption of the strategic plan, so.
And I also think it's a good opportunity for us to reflect on our goals. We had hoped to have two check-ins.
Right.
Over the course of this year to see how are we doing against what we said we would do. And whether it's during this retreat or before, you know, we meet, that we actually take the opportunity individually to be in compliance with the governing laws here. But we should reflect on whether or not we made the progress that we anticipated as a school committee.
Right. Thanks. Any other ideas or questions people have as you think about that time? I don't know what the process is gonna be, honestly, in terms of, like, setting the agenda, the opportunity for input from members of the committee. I guess that's, maybe that's something that we could, like, if there's a way we could bring a draft agenda to our final meeting of the year.
For the, for the school committee retreat or for the training?
The school committee retreat.
Yeah.
Kind of thinking about the training with MASC is gonna be something we'll kind of have on the horizon. You know, we can maybe, I mean, I could certainly inquire with MASC, like, what are even the topics that they would be prepared to facilitate for us? But we have a meeting, I guess it's June fourteenth. Would that be too soon to?
I don't think so.
Draft an agenda to get people's input on that?
I mean, I think we're talking about two different meetings, right? We're talking about one meeting, at least in my conception, we have one meeting where we're really talking about how are we going to work together? What does that look like? Like, as I inhabit this role, what does that look like? What are the expectations? What are the expectations with me to school committee, et cetera? So I think there's one meeting about that. I think there's a second meeting where the school committee is looking at the year ahead and, and re-establishing, confirming goals that were set previously, recasting them based on the work that's already happened. So I think those are.
Beginning to plan.
And then there's the, probably the Dorothy Presser training on evaluation or something, late August, September, somewhere.
Yeah.
So if, if I can just ask a process question. So as I, as you were talking, I would imagine then that the first meeting would be the shorter meeting. And then the second might be a more extended meeting where we can get to the how we will work together. There's a full reflection on the book, right? We want to have sort of the conversation, setting the stage for the work that we want to do together as to how we're gonna work as a body.
Yeah.
Right? And the priorities that we would set for ourselves for the year. That's, I think, something that perhaps got a little convoluted last time, that we sort of started looking at strategic planning priorities and goals, which is, those are a set of goals that are guiding the district.
Yeah.
But there should be a set of goals that guides our work as a body, right? Like, you know, we want to have X amount of forums because we want to make sure the community. Right? Like, you know, we want to have X amount of forums because we want to make sure the community, you know, is. Aware of what's happening. So that's the type of work in agreements that I would imagine we want to set to begin the year. Uh, but I would sort of think that it, the first one is a shorter meeting and the second one perhaps a longer working meeting.
Yeah, I, I think we can take up as much time as we have, to be honest. I know you were all really busy too. As much time as you can give this summer would be awesome.
Just to clarify as a newbie, so all meetings that we're going to have regardless if it's retreat or any. Gathering is going to be in this type format, like this camera recording and.
The retreats are not televised. So, but they are open meetings, they're posted. And we, last year we were in the library here upstairs. The year before that, we were in here. Members of the community can come, they can listen in. There's no citizen speak portion of the, um, the summer working retreat typically. But no, I don't believe that those are. Televised, they are just open for people to attend. That's how it's been in the past. Um, and you know, for when we're having a longer, they're also time for us, especially with Dr. Burrows, like to just. You know, continue getting to know one another. Team building, if you like, and especially with you, Dr. Burrows, like getting to know you, you getting to know us. So that's why. Um, it's nice to be able to sort of incorporate like a meal into it. For that purpose. So that makes it different from our standard meetings in that way.
Yeah, it feels different.
Okay, so I'll follow up. With you, Dr. Burrows, but I'll just say for myself, a goal would be to bring, to share with you all. Um, June fourteenth, just an outline of agendas for those times. Would be good to kind of nail down for our planning purposes, like the start, start times for those. And share like ideas for the agendas and get your feedback on those. Okay, great. The last item here is approval of vendor warrants. And I think this is under the chair's report because. The finance committee hasn't met technically because we just voted our. Uh, new appointments to be official. I guess for this one time, I can read out the vendor warrants and. Going forward, this will happen under finance committee, um, reports. Unless you want to read them.
Feel free, Chair Dr. Carol.
We have to do these all separately?
No, you can do them in one vote.
Okay, because nobody's abstaining from any of these. So, unless you choose to, but nobody has to. So we can bundle them.
We don't have any conflicts.
No conflicts. That's what I was trying to say. Thank you. Um, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve. The following vendor warrants, warrant forty payable in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand. Nine hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-three cents on April twentieth, twenty-three. Warrant forty-one was skipped, says, so then warrant forty-two. Payable in the amount of four hundred thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and seventy-nine cents on May fourth, twenty twenty-three. Warrant forty-three payable in the amount of five hundred eighty-six thousand and sixty-one dollars and seventy-three cents on May eleventh. Warrant forty-four payable in the amount of four hundred and five thousand, six hundred and four thousand. Six hundred and four dollars and sixty-two cents on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And warrant forty-five payable in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and three dollars and one cent on May twenty-fifth. Twenty twenty-three. Is there a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Great. Policy Subcommittee Report. Okay, so. This is the second reading. So Member of our Geese is the new Chair of Policy. I guess I was the Chair of Policy when we brought this forward for our first reading. This is Policy B H C. And I'll make a motion to approve the second reading. Um, and then we can open up for any questions or discussion. Is there a second? Second reading of Policy B H C Staff Communication. And thank you, Member of our Geese. Um, does anyone have any questions about this? The updates, uh, which came to us from M A S C.
I just have a clarifying question. Um, so if a school committee member wanted to visit schools, how far in advance should we contact the superintendent? To arrange the visit?
So, I mean, it's a good question. I think we're honestly like. Formulating what the protocol would be around this. In terms of per the policy, how to, like the way to organize or to express your interest in visiting a school. Would be to contact the superintendent with that request. To copy me as the Chair of the Committee. I know there, I think there really have been different ways that this has gone in the past. Um, but the key point per this policy is just that. Uh, we as members of the school committee will not be directly contacting principals of schools to arrange those meetings. But rather going through the superintendent. Um, and you know, where possible, potentially. Even like coordinating more than one, like if, if more than one of us is interested in visiting. A particular school, it might make sense, um, to let, you know, up to two or even three of us. Who, who are able to coordinate that, just so it's less work for the school leaders to manage like. Individual visits for. Several school committee members. Um, but Dr. McKinney, do you have other thoughts on that?
No, I think that's pretty much what we talked about. I mean, if you made a, a request, I think we could put something together within a week or two, but. Trying to be strategic and putting together a schedule where all committee members could visit the schools and see the same sort of thing if possible, depending on your schedules. So. And there's certainly times where schools are a little busy with MCAS and other things. So just. Keeping that in consideration when we build the schedules. So, thank you.
Thank you, sure. So, I mean, we're coming up to the end of the year. I would say. If anybody has interest in visiting particular schools. In the coming weeks, like I would make that request as soon as you can, just so that. With all the events and things that are happening, um, it's possible to, you know, set that up and recognizing that. You know, especially for newer school committee members, probably won't be possible to visit all of the schools. Um, in the next. Three weeks, probably, but, um. You know, I think it's, it's great to visit schools. I haven't yet actually. Done formal visits in all of the schools myself. I'm continuing to want to do that and. Just email Dr. McKinney and, and me.
But this is one of the things that I would hope that we are able to discuss in our planning for the year. It feels like that's something that's a very low, you know, sort of something that we can do and just sort of plan. I'm thinking ahead of the site council presentations, wouldn't it be nice that in conjunction to that. We actually visit. Obviously, if people can't make it because of their schedules, it's okay. But at least they're, they're already set on the schedule for the year and we can make it a point to visit the schools.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I was also going to mention that, um, it, it's helpful for onboarding too, to have an annualized visit. Where new, new school committee members automatically have something set up so that they, they come onto the school committee and then there's. An automatic way for you all to get into schools and, and kind of helps with feeling grounded and getting going in the role.
And I'm sure I know the answer to this, but this does not apply when you visit as a parent, correct?
I'll just add one thing, you know, it's a hectic time of year of coming at, to the end of the school year. But, uh, and we're all looking forward to summer, but if there is a day or a time to check out the summer programs, we're open through the summer. To see the things that we do for kids, I also think is an important opportunity as well. So.
Yeah, thanks. Good point. But thanks for raising that, Dr. Miranda. Yeah, absolutely. Let's like have that. As part of what we discuss in the summer because I think one of the things we're wanting to do is just. Be a little more proactive and how we plan for. Helping us all stay informed and if it can also support, um, onboarding, then that's also of course really. Helpful. So make a note of that.
What's happening out there sounds really a lot more fun.
So.
And they brought food. I did see that on my way in today.
Any other, um, questions on this policy? Before we're ready to vote? Okay, so, um, we have a motion on the floor, so all in favor of, um.
Give me a second.
Where's the wording? Of approving the second reading of Policy B H C. All in favor? Okay, great. Thank you. Unanimous. Member Ross Denny, Curriculum and Instruction Advisory Committee Report.
On May second at eight thirty-two AM, we called to order the Curriculum Instruction Advisory Committee. Dr. McKinney, Dr. Carol and myself were present. And we had two agenda items. The first was to compare the non-professional staff, for those of you who are unaware, it means. That you're within your first three years of teaching, but it doesn't necessarily mean, um, it was the Milton Public Schools. So if you're inexperienced. Teacher coming in from another district with experience, you would not be included in this number. Um, it was in response to a concern expressed by a former MPS staff member about the non-professional staff. At a specific school. Dr. McKinney provided us with two reports, one report comparing non-professional teachers. And non-professional staff as a percentage of all staff. And the other report comparing non-professional special education teachers with those who are general education teachers. And overall, there are varying levels in terms of non-professional staff, but the average for the district was twenty-seven percent. And the average for the non-professional teachers as a percentage of the overall staff was twenty-one percent. I think the underlying premise here is, is there a disproportionate number of non-professional teachers in, in one school versus another? While I do not have the timestamp of the one data request with the concern that was expressed by staff, I think we just all need to be. Conscious of the fact that the teaching profession is in a state, um, that's been very different from what we have seen traditionally with. People staying in the profession until they retire. So just being mindful of the fact that while. We are onboarding very new people to the profession, they're learning and they are going to experience a significant amount of professional development. They have mentors, they have assistant principals and principals. There is a small cohort of people that were meant to support these individuals. And the expectation is every student in Milton is going to have access to a high-quality education. Independent of the tenure of the teacher because of the supports that we have for all teachers. The second agenda item was an update on the strategic plan. Um, as many of you are aware, there are three pillars, personalized learning, safe and supportive schools and equity in learning. While the update itself was presented in a document that's way too long to share right now, I'm going to just go through a few highlights. Under personalized learning, this past school year, MPS leadership began professional development on personalized learning facilitated. Facilitated by Cindy Tamar, who is a former superintendent of the Melrose Public Schools. And following good practice, these were not one-shot deals. It happened over the course of a school year. As you remember, as you may remember, the school committee hosted a forum on personalized learning. Or invited MPS faculty to present to the community so they have a better understanding of what it entails. MPS faculty also experienced professional development on data analysis offered by the DataWise program out of the Harvard Graduate School of Education. And last but not least, the personalized learning team created a, a website for staff and family members. To identify resources as well as to gain a better understanding of what it means to engage in personalized learning. Under the safe and supportive schools pillar. Our faculty have completed a classroom of the comm classroom training. And two teachers in every building have been identified to participate in a train, the trainer model. And they are also assisting being the go-to person for leaders, um, go-to person for teachers who have questions about that training. Um, and then last, in terms of equity and learning, we spent a significant amount of time. Talking about the data that was presented by the Milton Coalition. And specifically around bullying of L B G Q T plus students as well as black students. And Dr. McKinney was able to share with us that he has been in contact with Principal Karen Cahill at the high school. And in addition to looking at the Milton Coalition data, she'll be looking at all of the data sources that we have around this topic. And the expectation is that she will triangulate what are the issues that are most salient. And that she plans on addressing along with a plan by the end of this school year. So we look forward to hearing whether it's. Over the summer at the beginning or at the beginning of the subsequent school year, what the high school's intentions are. For addressing this data. And then we adjourn around nine o'clock.
Thank you, Member Ross. Any, um, any, any questions or comments from any members? Dr. Miranda?
So if we go back to your first point around non-professional. Staff. And, um, seems like we were just looking at the percentage for, at the aggregate for the district. But, um, could, are we at some point going to be able to look at the data by schools?
In the report itself, it has it by school. And of non-professional teachers of the total staff, Colicott is at twenty-one point two percent. Cunningham is twenty-five point nine percent. Glover is twenty-seven point six percent. Tucker is twenty point nine percent. Middle School's nineteen point one percent and the high school is fifteen point four percent. I do not like reading numbers without people willing to look at it because it's really hard to retain. But I'll be happy to forward this to you because it is true, um, research shows that. If you have a non-professional teacher two years in a row. The impact on student learning can be dramatic. And it's very important that as we review this data, that we're thoughtful about placement. So that we are not creating a, a, a setting that doesn't, um, reflect what we know to be research-based practices.
That's right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Have we, uh, you all been able to look at how this data maybe overlaps with, uh, retention data as it relates to. You know, number of new employees, even if they are tenured, but new to. Uh, Milton Public Schools and therefore new to the, the policies, practices of kind of, uh, how we are educating kids.
That's a really good question. We have none. At least I, I personally have not, but that's a really good question that I think might be a great agenda item for another curriculum instruction advisory committee.
Yeah, just in terms of the compounding effect of kind of both of those groups.
Thanks. Good question.
Thank you. Uh, if there's no more questions or comments on that report. Then we can move on to approval of minutes. Uh, we have one set of minutes. For. They're here somewhere. Yes, sorry. May tenth, twenty twenty-three. Did everyone, um, have a chance to review these? Okay, so, um, make a motion to approve the minutes. Okay, so um, make a motion to approve the minutes of May tenth, twenty twenty-three Milton School Committee Meeting. Is there a second? Okay, did anyone have any edits or? Anything for these? Alright, great, then we can go ahead and uh, vote, all in favor of approving these. Um, all opposed? All abstained? Okay. Um, great. That just leads to next agenda, next meeting agenda. Alright, so our next meeting will be June seventh at seven PM here in person. Um, because prior to that meeting, we have the retirees reception. Which will be here at the courtyard downstairs. Um, in terms of. Agenda items, um. Will we have a finance? Will you be meeting before then?
Do they come and love to? With the doctor family, yes, we will have a meeting.
Okay, um, facilities will be meeting. Uh, would you like to have a report at that meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Um, policy may, may be on the following agenda?
Will be on the fourteenth.
Okay, um. Health and wellness. We, we need to, it, it would be good to um, have that meet. One time before the end of the year, um, but Dr. Miranda, I'll follow up with you. And with you, Member Vargis, to sort of hand off the um, the scheduling of that. Um, and either way, we won't, maybe won't have it on our next agenda. But maybe try to have that on the fourteenth if possible, if you've had a chance to meet before then, hopefully. Um, any other topics? Um. Dr. McKinney? Do you know of anything that you are wanting to have on the agenda for the seventh?
There was a request at the last meeting to have a short overview of the Power School Suite, so.
Yes, yeah, right, thank you.
Small but mighty presentation.
Okay. Any other requests, um, school committee members?
I don't know if June is the time to do it, but I'm always interested in, as we're approaching next year, um, just hiring. And you know, how, where we're at with openings, um, experience of hires, diversity of hires, just any and all of that stuff as we approach. You know, before it's August, September, obviously, it's wa- way too late to raise any flags at that point.
Is that something we could get just a quick status update on at one of those next two meetings?
Uh, current status is we have fifty posted positions from Paris, summer positions, coaches, subs, cafeteria and custodians. So, um, I think we're on track, meeting and hiring folks and screening committees in place, so. It's at a different place than obviously last year, I think we had seventy new hires when I came in by the end of August, so um. I can keep giving an update to the committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
If anyone thinks of other topics or have, you have questions about things that you want to see on the agenda, please just let me know. We still have time to add things um. Over the next week.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Is the meeting on June fourteenth in person or online?
Well, so let's um, we can talk about that now, um. What preferences do you all have? Because we know next week is going to be in person, just because we're going to be here. For the reception right before. Um, I'm definitely willing to. Enter, would, are there people who would have a preference either way between in-person or online for June fourteenth?
I prefer online, it gives me a lot more flexibility with my schedule.
I prefer online also.
Okay.
You do have facilities advisory from five thirty to six thirty on that day. That's in person, I believe.
Yes, then I guess we're in person.
So.
Do that and run home, you know.
Member Loring and Member Vargis.
We'll just be here by ourselves.
I think you would be able to get home in half hour, right?
Yeah, okay, why don't we say this, we'll like tentatively uh, plan to have that one be on Zoom? Since, you know, we still are not equipped for um. Hybrid meetings, which is something that I also hope will be on our agenda for the summer to discuss. Uh, kind of a longer-term plan for that, so in the meantime, I d- I do see some um, benefit in. Alternating and that provides the ability for folks who would like to participate in citizen speak, who can't physically get here for our in-person meetings. That they could zoom in for that, so that's an added plus, but I'm all for um, helping people be flexible with their calendars. So, I'll check with Charlene about that, um, and we'll follow up in the, you know, that's, that's a few weeks away. But thanks for asking, Number Two. Um.
Can I add one other thing?
Yes, yeah.
Just when we're looking ahead to the um, the dates in July and August. I, I think if we could just have a little time in there around the metrics, because we asked for data, maybe we could schedule those at key points of the year. So we could speak to them in greater depth. Um, the uh, Boo, the Director of Analytics. The Queen of Data has been putting together a dashboard that tracks all that stuff and it's pretty slick, so we'll be able to see. Questions around hiring, retention, better analytics that we could share with the committee if we schedule it at certain times during the year. As opposed to a snapshot in time, so just a clue for thought.
That's great.
Terrific. Thanks. Okay, um, well, we do, uh, let's, we're gonna adjourn um, into executive session. Um. I'm sorry, I am like, I'm a mess. Um, thank you, okay. Um, I want to get the wording right for this, so we um, at this time are going to adjourn into executive session. For the purpose of discussing strategy session for negotiations, collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Pursuant to uh, Mass General Law Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A two. Um, I will make that motion.
Not to return to open session, but to.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Not to return to open session, but to adjourn directly from executive session. Um, I'll, I'll make that motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, all in favor? Alright, so thank you very much. Um, good evening, everybody.